Well, we would welcome everybody to Titan Media Entertainment's Campaign Podcast, a little bit of a twist from America's elite businesses up close and personal. I'm your host, Chris Jones, and we have a different twist today. And of course, we all recognize we are in a time that is called for decision makers. It's called for people to stand up and ask for help. Well, schools, businesses, everybody's been affected by the current events. Our leaders are being praised and criticized. So today, and I commend this lady, and you're getting ready to meet her. She came forward early. A lot of people said, well, let's wait till the smoke clears and we'll give you an opportunity. Well, she said, no, I have issues that I want to talk about now. A true campaign candidate. We have Ida with us, Ida Wright. Good morning.
Nice to meet you.
Well, we didn't plan on anything today, which is good. So everything is from the hip.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on, and we'll get into that in a minute. And that's the unique thing about this interview. You said, Chris, you know, we'll talk a little bit about me, but we've got four months
Exactly.
...to build my campaign. But if you wanted to express your thoughts on present issues, current events, especially how they pertain to you. First and foremost, you're running for what position?
School Board District Two.
Okay, now, you have an incredible bio and resume. I mean, from the dean at Bethune-Cookman. I'm a guy that was a student athlete, but I didn't practice it like I should have.
Okay.
So I have great respect for people that truly have academics at the highest level. But you're willing to come back into the schools.
Well, being a native, so a little bit about me.
Yes.
Being a native from Volusia County, Daytona Beach, born right here. And I attended Mayland High School, which we are sitting at today.
That's where we are.
I was born at Halifax Hospital. So this is home for me.
Okay.
And so, education is who I am. You're correct. I currently serve as the dean of the College of Business and Entrepreneurship at Bethune-Cookman University. I'm also currently the chair of Volusia County Schools. And so, it's a very unique and great marriage. I get a chance to impact lives from K through 12, and then really see that impact as it flourishes. If they attend Bethune-Cookman or as they move forward with their careers, be it career and technical, or decide to come to higher education. So this is something I'm very passionate about.
You know, when I first met you, you said, Chris, I gotta be honest, I was getting ready to retire. But then you said, they pulled me back. It's kind of like a John Wick movie, where John Wick was ready to just call it quits. He was no longer going to do what he did. He said, but they pulled me back. What pulled you back into this big responsibility, but it's going to touch a lot of lives?
And you said, John Wick. When I said that, actually, I was thinking of The Godfather, because one of the scenes was, you know, every time I tried to get out, they just pulled me back in.
Right, right.
But I had a couple teachers and administrators contact me over the Thanksgiving, Christmas holiday.
Yes, ma'am.
And asked, would I reconsider? During that, I had actually talked to a couple people a year prior to just try to find out a guy who had interest in running for the seat, trying to educate them about the role, making sure they understand that we're policymakers, and we hire superintendent to run the day-to-day operations. And within the last year, we've had a lot to change in our district. So I'm gonna use the school that I'm at. Right now, Mr. Huth, that you will get a chance to meet, was actually here when I was a student.
He told me.
He was. I was one of his students. And so, he took over the helm as the principal for this year. We just hired a new superintendent who started in December, Dr. Fritz from Nasiola. So they felt that it was so many things going on in our district that they didn't want to, if possible, have to see a major change or somewhat of a disruption in the continuity that me and my colleagues appear to have. And we do. We work really well together. So listening to that, quite naturally, I talked to my family, talked to friends, talked to them, and finally, I came back and said, okay, I will reconsider, but I want to talk to a couple of people. And so, two of the people that I initially spoke with about running for my seat had the same feelings. They said, they actually contacted one of the administrators to talk to me, because they felt that they were not prepared, or they were not prepared at this time to seek this seat. The other two candidates that was in the race, I had a chance to talk to them as well.
And that's very unique. I mean, you contacted the, I'm not going to say enemy, but you said, I'm going to be in this race, here I come.
The candidates, because I thought it was only fair.
Okay.
I had publicly stated on radio, in the newspaper, even at school board meetings, that I was not seeking reelection for this seat. And to me, I'm always about being upfront and being honest. So I didn't want to just spring it on them, or for them to think that it was a ploy. It was honestly-
A true change of heart.
A true change of heart, and it was that because of my peers' acts. The people that I represent-
It's the highest compliment.
...acts, and you're absolutely right, for me to reconsider at least with just one term. And so, I do believe my candidates are outstanding. They bring a lot of wealth and knowledge too. They too could bring the same thing to the board. But just for continuity, I think that's where people, and especially now with COVID-19, there's just so much unrest, they just like to see a familiar face.
I want to go back to where we're at. We're at Mayland High School here in beautiful Daytona Beach.
Yes.
I'm not going to give the year that you graduated.
1984, 1984. I'm not ashamed of that.
All right. Well, I was 19. That's, it kind of headed to that. But it's kind of funny, we walked up here to the high school, and this gentleman comes out very casual, and he introduced himself as the principal. And then I said, well, we're here to see Ida. And this man said, nothing moves without your approval. Now, you're gonna have to kind of explain that. I mean, he wouldn't let us go inside. He wouldn't let us interview him. Apparently, this gentleman has a lot of respect for you and what you're doing today.
And I have equally the same amount of respect for Mr. Huth. Mr. Huth was a deputy superintendent prior to his retirement. And like I said, just wonderful and fond memories. Mayland brings really fond memories back for me. And so, being the chair and sitting on the board, we do have a relationship. And right now, we have closed our campuses. We are open for business.
Right.
And we are having people call that if they need to enter the business, the buildings. So he's just following the directive-
Right.
-and the policy that we've set forth that right now, to protect them, and to protect you and myself, that we've asked people to work from home and to only open the building if necessary, or if with prior approval.
Were you this active in high school? I mean, I've, like I said, I read your bio.
Yes.
I catch you in the middle of your days barely, but that means there's causes, there's people, there's responsibilities that you're addressing each and every day. Were you one of those people that would be most likely to do every and all things in high school?
I won't say that, but I was actively engaged, and so were the people, my friends. We were always engaged in school. And so, being on the Future Business Leaders of America, I knew I was going into the field of business. I was going to study business. Mayland was that stepping stone that really helped push me there. I think of my teachers, in particular, one, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Tucker was my accounting teacher.
Oh.
And he actually was the person that helped shape my decision to go into business. I think of my math teacher.
That's great.
Mr. Ransome was probably one of the best math teachers ever.
Wow.
But he's now retired.
Okay.
And I even think of my days at Campbell. Math and business were my strong suit.
Wow.
And I think of Ms. Valeria Slater. She was Slaton. She was my math teacher. And Ms. Hawkins. So I have nothing but fond memories. And I want students that attend schools here in Volusia County to really have the same memories when they become an adult, to really sit back and reflect all of, reflect on all of the fun and activities they had, be it Mayland School, Seabreeze, the Land High School, wherever they attend high school, as well as elementary and middle. And I had someone laughing the other day. I said to them, I pretty much know all of my teachers back from elementary.
That's unreal. But you know what, though? That shows, and just to let everybody know, this is our first podcast. We'll be doing weekly podcasts all the way to Election Day, which is in August.
Right.
It's a great opportunity for us to build a face and what's in the heart and behind Ida here in. But you chose your high school as our first podcast. I mean, we've talked about numerous things from Bethune-Cookman. I mean, we could have been any and everywhere, but you chose this place. Why?
Like I said, I spent four years here, three years. Let me rephrase that.
You graduated early?
No, we only had 10th, 11th, and 12th.
That's all we had.
When I was in high school.
Me too.
And so, we had a seventh grade center. Campbell was then a junior high, so we had eighth and ninth grade there.
Correct.
But I just had fond memories here, fond memories at Campbell. My elementary is no longer in existence. It was torn down, and now it's owned by Daytona State. The seventh grade center is no longer in existence. But I chose here, because right now, we're at the cusp of something great. COVID-19 is something that has caused much angst. However, I believe we have opportunity, there are so many opportunities that will come about here, and I believe my high schools are going to be impacted greatly first with digital learning.
Okay, great.
And so, when we talk about where we're going and what we want to do, right now, you know, we are, everybody in the United States and probably around the world have moved to a digital learning format.
Or podcasts.
Or podcasts. And so, with that, and I consider that part as digital learning.
And we're thankful.
That's right. And so, when, as we tread on new territory-
Very good.
Higher ed has pretty much been in this space for a while. Many schools have opened up to 101 using technology, but they have not taken it to the extent where they are fully, truly involved online. There are some programs that, or some schools, that have catered to a very small audience. But now, we have an opportunity here in Volusia County, and we do have a online program. But I believe that this will grow in leaps and bounds. And first of all, I think it will have the greatest impact on our high schools.
Well, one thing it has done is expanded the mindset for teachers for these elections, every decision. There, I mean, this is a decision-making time. People are looking to leaders for positive. They're looking to some of the former leaders in a negative fashion. It's only because of the stress-
Right.
-that some of these households have right now. But we are looking to leaders very quickly here, and even probably within the next couple of minutes, decisions on who can leave their house, what business can open early, what sort of things that we're trying to reach to students. Are we hitting the students at home that we could visibly see that we're struggling? It's a decision-making time, and people like yourself, I mean, we're going to be looking to you, and so it's a time of great responsibility.
It is. And I call that crisis management. I had an opportunity to listen to a podcast-
A podcast.
-by John Maxwell. And during that podcast, we talked about crisis management. What does that look like? And one of the things that I shared with the superintendent and with my colleagues, it is important that at this stage, we are very clear, very concise, one message. We don't need to add a whole lot of tentacles to that message.
Okay.
One singular message, let's do what we can the very best. We will worry about the rest a little later. Everybody's overwhelmed, and in addition to that, we need to plan. So this gives us an opportunity just to pause and say, now, where do we move from-
Right.
-moving forward? And we will have to have a Plan A, a B, a C, and a D. And most people say, why so many? We don't know what tomorrow will hold.
That's right.
We don't know how social distancing, how long that will be in place, and will it be six feet? And will you be able to congregate with crowds larger than 10, 25, 50, 100, which all still impact K-12?
Correct.
Because our average school size is about 700. So as we begin to digest and look at everything that's happening, where do we see ourselves? Not just for the fall, five, 10 years from now, because I really do believe 10 years or 20 years from today, the conversation will be, what took you all so long to get here? And most people will come back to COVID-19. And I was telling some graduating seniors, you will be a part of every study that will take place from this point forth for about another 20 years.
Exactly.
How did it impact commencement and your decision to go into the career that you've chosen, go to college, or go to career and technical school? All of that will play a major role. And what made us go into simulation and virtual reality and-
How about that? It opened a million doors, didn't it?
It will open, it has opened so many opportunities that they will be able to just have a great conversation. Right now, it's a little painful, because we're looking at commencement-
Growing beds.
And, you know, how we're going to figure out commencement, and you know, prom, and grad night, and all those things that I experienced, that many of them unfortunately will not get a chance to experience in their high school, or even their collegiate commencement activities. And so, we do, they're just, they're amazing group, and they don't realize it.
And that's wonderful. I mean, even though we are a different generation, for you to be able to come back. And it's kind of like I talk about my old football days, and you know, many decades after that, they brought back to my university a coach that was back in my day.
Okay.
And they said, you know, well, this guy had great success in my years. He'll have it now. But these kids didn't know who he was or his impact. It was a completely different generation. How do you feel, you know, being out of the game for a little while, to come back and help these kids that have a completely different mindset?
Well, it's unique. It gives me an opportunity to learn as well.
There you go.
As a lifelong learner, I'm learning.
Okay.
And so, I don't have all the answers. I don't want to portray that I do. And we're learning together. This is a new normal for all of us. And as much as they can learn from me, I can learn equally the same from them, from their language to how they prefer to communicate.
To listen.
And to listen. And that is a gift.
Because we're teachers. We want to talk and teach, but to listen is so important, because they want to talk, but they're also giving us how we can communicate with them.
Exactly. And that's an important part of crisis management, communication. And the number one thing is, are you a good listener?
There you go. It's so important.
It is. I gotta take input from everyone, and then shape that into one cohesive message. But again, since none of us really are experts in anything, and we have expertise in our own silos-
Right.
-we gotta pull all of that together to do what's best for everyone.
Want to remind everybody, this is the first of many podcasts here. My name is Chris Jones. I'm the host. We're here with Ida Wright, a wonderful candidate here dipping in very early with the current events as they are in. And I want to ask you a question. The government tries to emulate what they see around them. They see China, even though they said that China really never gave us a direct pattern, or the real truth, as they say. Sometimes it's hard to admit things are bad. President Trump should have probably hit the panic, but maybe a little earlier, even though he did the right things, not allowing certain countries to come in with their infection. How do we now look to other people, especially in the school district? I mean, we look to China now. After 76 days, they're back in. So we're following their patterns as best as we can.
Okay.
What does the school board do? Is there anything that we can look at as a pattern?
And so, I'm glad you brought that point, because they had reopened up certain industries to reclose some of them now.
Oh, wow.
And so, most of the education is still taking place virtual. There are other countries that had like a break between December and February, and talked to one of my colleagues. And now, what they've come back to school to do is move to a virtual format. And so, they probably will be virtual through next December. And so, that's going to be easily. Easily. So that, again, is interesting, because they're still practicing social distancing. They're practicing wearing masks. I do have my mask, everyone, and I'm sure Chris has it.
I have my mask.
And we have, we're practicing social distancing, and it's only three of us in here.
Yes.
But again, the impact on K-12, as well as higher ed, is tremendous, because it's really hard for us to navigate such a small group in a classroom.
What is K-12? Explain to our viewers and listeners.
So kindergarten, so from kindergarten through 12th grade-
Okay.
-we refer to as K-12.
Okay.
And then, from higher ed, that's students that are in college or career and technical schools.
Okay.
And so, for us, it is a challenge for both entities as we grapple with what is the next step. So if we do move forward, where we potentially could be, that that's one scenario, we got to thoroughly plan out, what would that look like? Will we need to be, all of our students have technology 101? Will we need to make sure that they have their textbooks and materials from day one off to their homes? Or will the parents have to pick it up? So there are several things we have to navigate through. If we decide to go back to school, and they're going to allow you to congregate 250, do we have a staggered schedule where students will come in for a couple of hours, leave another group? So each of these A, B, C, D, E, F, G-
Game plans.
-all of these plans have to have something definitive that we're trying to address. And we have to make sure that we are flexible, because we don't know.
Does that put a little pressure on you? Because I listened to the president, and of course, there's a lot of conversations of states that still are not on lockdown. The president says, I leave it up to the people that have been elected. I have great faith and empowerment in these governors. Well, the same responsibility is going to be trickled down to you in time here-
That's correct.
-as you're making decisions for students. Do we let them back in? What are the processes? Do we test children? Give me a little bit of your game plan, an early game plan, and is it additional pressure?
And so, for the last two weeks, we've, we started our digital plan. We've had an opportunity to reach out to our teachers. So one of the things that the superintendent and I and some of my colleagues have discussed, let's get feedback from the people that do it every day. What would you recommend? How do you foresee this? Even to transportation, to our food, and to our food service, I can't commend my cafe, Foodway Cafe, or my transportation, or my maintenance department, because they've actually been working during this period. They are our first responders.
Wow.
And so, they've been making sure that our children are fed, that we can deliver the food, that we're keeping our buildings clean, and doing repairs. But from them, they're helping us develop our plan. We've gone to the lowest level to say, okay, what route should we run? Where should we administer food? If we have to continue this, what should we do moving forward for the summer and the fall? And if we have to go, if we are digital, or if we have to do partial, now we're going to lean on our teachers to bring that back. And then again, like I say, in crisis management, we take all of that, and we roll out a couple scenarios, and let's have a conversation that we best execute the plan for Volusia County.
Well, as we know, social distancing is not allowing businesses and people to kind of interact with the general public for a time being here. The podcast has become such a valuable commodity, being able to have an archived interview for people can go back at any given time, morning, noon, and night, and hear the message that people are recommending, or that they need to hear, these podcasts. And I know you're going to reach out as many ways as you can, but we're fairly limited right now because of the current events here. These podcasts, these weekly podcasts, besides your campaign, what sort of message are you trying to get out to people?
That I want everybody just to take a deep breath, relax. Times are trying, but if you understand that this too shall pass, it will. And that we really do count on our families and our business community, our students, our seniors are helping us figure out what we're going to do for commencement. It will take each and every one of us to navigate through this process. But through it, it's going to make us stronger. It's going to bring about opportunities we could never imagine. And that, again, my favorite saying, this too shall pass.
You know, you told me earlier that the human mind is a complacent mind sometimes. And when situations or circumstance arise that challenge us, it makes us the person that we're really created to be.
Amen.
So I believe that this time right now, as unfortunate as it may seem, is expanding the minds, opening the hearts. I mean, it's a powerful revisitation of 9/11, but we will get stronger, and people like you, we need you, and we thank you for coming in so early in your campaign. A lot of people are waiting to the smoke clears, and that's not acceptable to me.
Right.
I think it's time now for our leaders to stand up, and we're excited about our weekly podcast, to hear from you and the growth of what we're doing. Anything before we part here? We want to thank Ida Wright again. We want to thank Mayland High School, and we're going to have the principal on here. We're going to find out what you did back in the day. Anything you would like to part? We're going to have lots and lots of podcasts, and anything you'd like to part with anybody?
Parting thoughts to parents, students-
Thank you.
-community leaders, please follow Volusia County's website, where we will update you regularly, if not daily, of what we are, the business that we're transacting. And sometimes, it may be a little delayed, because most people think that we are making all of our decisions. Currently, we're not-
Right.
-because we're on an emergency order. We take all of our directives from our governor and our Department of Education. And so, as soon as we receive the information, and normally, we're always on the calls together, both the school board, as well as superintendent, that we will share that. But trust me, we are completing, we are creating plans.
Yes.
And we will roll those plans out as soon as we have been given permission to share. But we are planning. We're preparing. We're planning. And we are just praising all of our teachers and students for just being patient with us.
Some people move when they feel like everything is ready. Your campaign website is a week away, but you still said, Chris, I have a message. Of course, when your campaign website is up and running, which is right around the corner, there'll be more readily information for people to go to when they're not viewing our podcast, but for you to come forward and say, hey, I need to see and speak, even though we may not be completely ready, but we're ready to act in any way we can.
And again, this was a way for me to just reassure the public-
Thank you.
-that we understand your pain, because we too are staying, I'm working from home, we're practicing social distancing. I know this is difficult, but trust me, I don't want you to think that we are complacent, to know that we are planning, we have weekly, daily calls and conversations. I think you can attest to that.
Yes.
And so, there's, there's a lot going on behind the scenes that everybody may not see, but we are working.
We're testing our complacency. We have Ida Wright, and we're so very thankful. Like I said, a lot of the candidates are waiting to the smoke clears. To me, that's unacceptable. It's all about making the movement now, whether if it's just a call, a recommendation. But the complete package is being put together each and every week.
Yeah.
We thank Ida. We'll see you guys here probably, well, if you're archived, it could be in the next five minutes. We'll see you next week. Well, we want to welcome everybody back to Titan Media Entertainment's Campaign Podcast. We just had an opportunity to talk to one of the candidates, Ida Wright. What a great, great interview. And of course, she chose Mayland High School for her first podcast, a recent graduate from Mayland High School. And apparently, the history drew her back here for our first one, so we got very lucky on the way in here. And we got to run into the principal. Principal Huth, we thank you, and I'm going to be easy on Ida.
Okay.
We're not going to dig up any dirt, at least till I get to know you a little better here. But in all reality, for our viewers and listeners, we're at Mayland High School. Can I ask you something? With all the current events, how's it affecting your high school right now?
You know, it's a change, no doubt about it. You know, all these students that are here at the high school level have gone through 10-plus years of regular, normal, high, elementary, middle school, day-to-day kind of an experience. And now, those that are seniors, they are out of their routine, as well as the 9th, 10th, and 11th, going to an online environment. And so, we miss them, they miss us. We have grown up with interactions, face-to-face meetings, and we're blessed that they're safe and that they are still connected to us, even if it's through this multimedia technology. And we're hoping that they stay safe and that in the next few weeks, this thing will improve, and we can see them again before the end of the year.
Well, you, you mentioned the kids and, and the distancing, and, and I remember vaguely when I was young, but I can, uh, understand that they're watching the growth of these kids. I mean, that's the, the, the special part of your teachings, is to see the stages as they grow. I mean, you're, you're basically their parents. You get them more than the parents do, and that's gotta kinda break your heart a little bit.
It does, and you know, um, we've had students that's going, have come by to, uh, pick up a computer, need some additional assistance, and we both say the same thing, we miss each other. And, uh, that's that personal touch, personal interaction, uh, but we'll, uh, we'll get it back and get it going again.
Well, you know, Ida, uh, mentioned that, that's, you know, in our complacent society, it's allowing people now to open their minds up a little bit, you know? And, and, and a mind wasted is, is a wasted mind. And, and people are coming forward now, not just with their hearts, but their minds and their efforts and their joint efforts, uh, to prepare for the future here. Even when we get an opportunity to come back, we're still gonna have to be leery of something that may, you know, just like the flu, may have a home.
You know, these students are gonna be studied for the rest of their lives, because they're gonna be that niche group-
That's right.
That has this impact on. And many of these students actually, um, if you count back in time, some of these were born at, during the year of, um, two thousand one, nine eleven.
Right.
And now, they have this in their lives. And so, this will be a unique study group that's out there, but I think it's gonna be good. This generation, they'll be okay. They'll be more resilient, open to change, understanding that there's outside forces that impact you and affect you. And that you have to react to them. But you have to react to them, um, and react to change in a positive way.
Well, we're at Mayland High School here, and we just had a podcast with Ida Wright, the candidate here, uh, for the upcoming school board. And, um, we have Principal Huth with us. So, let's just take an opportunity. I thought, what a great coincidence, you know? We're at her first high school. It's our first podcast. Now, you said you were a teacher.
I was a teacher during the day when, uh, Ms. Wright was a student here. And, um, uh, I had an opportunity to know her as a student, and always one that was regular in attendance. She was a good, hard-working student, and I really can't say anything that would be revealing or, or something negative. There's nothing there to that. She was very focused on her education, and it's, it's played out for her life very well. Because once she graduated from Mayland High School and she continued her academic, uh, successes, it led her to where she is today, and, and I know that's a, um, a blessing for her. But also for us to know that we have students like her benefiting from the instructions they get at Mayland High School, and have the opportunity to go on to a new opportunity.
I saw you and her, uh, talking, uh, briefly. Are you guys interacting right now in some sort of level?
We do, and, uh, we stay in contact, um, much like we are with the students through emails, internet, and those type of things. But with Ms. Wright, because of, um, the leadership positions, we, um, both have more time to interact with each other.
Let's talk very quickly here, the upcoming campaign, and I know we're not gonna get deep into the campaign, but they gotta make a lot of decisions here. Uh, it's important that we get the right person, and, and the person that people believe in.
You know, like anything else, um, having a background of information, having a background of knowledge, um, some people call it institutional knowledge. When you have times that are challenging, that's, uh, very, very beneficial. Not to say new ideas can't be brought into it, but you have a framework, a foundation from where to go on this. And their decision-making process, um, for our board is gonna be challenging enough, and then to have experience on your side is always a positive for our community.
You know, you mentioned you miss, uh, the interacting with the kids here and watching their growth here. But, um, on the flip side, to see a student, a, and we kinda knew she was gonna be, as you said, that student because of her progressive, uh, nature from high school, didn't wanna miss a day, had, had lofty goals. How important is it to see somebody come back that you knew you had a part? And, and to see her play such a significant role, not just in her life, not just in the kid's life, but in a very crucial time?
Well, it's a role model situation.
Excellent.
You know, we wanna have people that, um, are in our community that are vested in our community. And so, she's an example of a person that grew up in our, our, um, town, went through our schools, participated in extracurricular activities, um, graduated with honors, and has been a success, as I say, as a role model. That's very important to us, because we have a saving, saying around here, it's a motto, buck pride never dies. And all of the graduates take that with them into their careers.
Correct.
And they can be anywhere in the country, in the world, and if I say buck pride, they'll come back with never dies. And so, that's a good thing. But the, the purpose is, they feel connected.
Yes.
And that's what we like to see in our community, or the leaders that are connected to Mayland or any other of the schools that are in this area as well.
Uh, I wanna very quickly here, we got a minute left here, and we thank, uh, we have the principal here at Mayland High School, our first podcast. And it was chosen for an emotional reason. She said, I'll never forget my teachers. I knew them all. I'll never forget. And you were not a principal at that time, but you're a principal now, which means you've also followed the path of doing the right things. And, uh, if we have to just do a closing statement here, uh, the current times have strained us. It's also expanded the minds of a complacent society. We're building for the future here. Uh, we're bringing an awareness, um, we're, we're coming together like we've never come together. Um, what would you say about the potential of Ida's involvement and influence? Not just on what she's getting ready to do, but maybe your high school in the future.
You know, I think that it's gonna be a message of compassion. It's gonna be a message, message of tolerance. She'll have a message also of acceptance and inclusion, and, uh, those are very important, um, elements that we need to have in our society in this unique time with the, um, health emergency that we have nationwide.
Well, we wanna thank everybody again for, uh, the audio and visual here. At Titan Media Entertainment, I am Chris Jones, and we thank Ida for her time. We, I'm gonna, since I've got to know him, he's Principal Tim to me. I'm, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get a little youthful here. We thank everybody for tuning in. You can enjoy this podcast at TitanMediaEntertainment.com. And, uh, we thank again Principal Tim and Mayland for having us. God bless.